My name is Monty Agans, I'm the chair to my left. Your right, vice chair, Mr. Cervais. Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Hemmle, Mr. Ray Dell. To my right, the board, Ms. Murphy. The head of instructional services. Jay Duka. Excuse me, here he is. Another board member, I didn't see him. Mr. Frankel. If you got a cellphone or paged it, could you please put it on silent and vibrate not to interrupt the meeting? If anyone wants to talk, please go outside. There's no microphones here, it's hot enough, you can speak up when you come here. Please don't go on and on and on. Just, if you've got something to add to the project, say it. Bang, 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 and move on. It's gonna be a long night tonight if you could. If anyone's gonna testify tonight, could you please stand up and raise your right hand? If anyone's gonna testify, you think you might testify. You even think you might. Take an oath, please. If anyone don't take an oath, they won't get up here. Mr. Cervais.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Under all business, case number Z seventeen forty-seven. Win Chen for variance to replace the front stairs with an L-shaped staircase leading to the driveway and convert the porch to a three-season porch. Compromise to fourteen Fols Street. Go on. Yeah, up in here? I see you didn't get up to take an oath. Please give an oath.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? And you'll stop lying?
So, my name is Rui.
You gotta speak up, no one can hear, really.
My name is Rui, and this is my dad.
Yeah?
Even Chen. So, we're here because we had a redesigned housing plan since last time, and we weren't so happy about a plan.
Well, the plan didn't show what you had for outside, what you were putting on the building. This don't show me either. What are you putting on the building?
Well, it's just a picture of, um, finished porch. After, so we have to redesign the three-season porch, just adding more windows.
You're leaving the outside the way it is, just adding the windows, all of this?
Yes, I mean, we're just changing.
You're putting a new door on it?
Yeah.
All right. No new roof, or you're leaving that roof? Is that a roof plan?
Um, I think so.
Okay, I don't know. Any questions?
I have one. At the original drawing, you have the door kind of in the center of the porch. I mean, in the stairs. And on this one you gave us tonight, it's sort of on the side.
Yes.
This is gonna be the side?
Mm-hmm. I mean, the right, it's in the right in this picture, right? If you look at the next, the next one.
Yep.
It's the door here. And yeah, two things on the right. Two things on the left.
Did we, we asked them to pick a vertical door coming out of the middle of the stairs and then coming out?
Right. But if you flip the page, see the page? Now look to the other page. Second page? No, right here. It's going on the left. Things go one on the right, right?
That's this one there.
But it don't show here.
Yeah, these is here, right? And this one's on this one.
Yeah, right. Then you go inside. But is that the second floor?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, just done.
Thank you. I know we already had people speak on it. The only thing we wanted to hear is a render. I'm in favor, just as long as you make it like the render, and I'll be happy.
I'll be in favor, please.
Right, right. As well.
You're in favor.
Have a motion, please.
In matter Z seventeen dash forty-seven, Win Chen for variance to replace the front stairs with an L-shaped staircase leading from the driveway, convert the porch to a three-season porch on the premises number fourteen Fols Street. Quincy, I make a motion like the.
We asked them to change the L shape.
Well.
L shape.
L-shaped stairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Question?
Sorry?
On a motion, CNN, all in favor?
I, I suppose.
Come on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brother under all business, case number Z seventeen sixty, Wobley Builders LLC, for variance to reconstruct two buildings, each containing two townhouses, for a total of four units on the premises number twenty-five Kidders. The afternoon of the record, dinner, beer.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and three members of the board. My name is Walt Hanez, and I represent Wobley Contractors, which is actually owned by Don Gillespie, the president of McCorey. This involves a piece of property on twenty-three, twenty-five Kidder Street. Just for the history of it, twenty-three, twenty-five Kidder Street was taken by the city many, how, a couple few years ago. It was then taken, and then it was sold given to the, to the general who approved the sale, Mr. Don, Mr. Gillespie, as he bought the property. But you can add before you's pictures of what the property looked like at the time that he purchased it, the time the city took it. After a long drawn-out court battle, both in district court and in land court, Mr. Gillespie finally was able to purchase the property. The, the person that alleged to have owned the property appealed it, and then it was determined that he never owned the property, that's a disingenuity. And I guess he would have been going to the city saying, "You own property, you're doing it all." So, Mr. Gillespie took over this property. These poses to build, take away the, the other units that was there, he's already demolished our building. He proposed to build four townhouses, as we see here. I will say, a week before this board, three meetings ago, and when we, before this board, we had not had a neighborhood meeting. And so I asked this board for continuing, so we could have a neighborhood meeting. After we had a neighborhood meeting with the people in the area, there was a lot of communication back and forth, and we changed some designs. As you can see here, what we are facing is two townhouses that face each other. In the middle's a driveway, and what we added after neighborhood meeting was the fencing all around the building here. We made the entrance smaller, and we put much more green space in the back to ensure some of the neighbors required. Again, what we have here is an old dilapidated building that was, that was in danger, it was not only nice, it was more in danger than anything. And Mr. Gillespie took it over. We have the engineer here to discuss how exactly everything better run, you guys, any water issues or anything that may exist, and he's available for any questions. But again, this is a, this is an area, I, I will tell you that some of the neighbors are concerned, I can't deny that, they're not there, but I think he's worked with the city, he's worked with the neighbors, to get the best possible product you could have. And that is two beautiful townhouses, again, these are older occupied townhouses, with a great buffer on there. What he's bringing there is green space that wasn't there, and he's opening up the middle because we were coming and going. The road itself has a problem, we have met, and I've spoken myself with the councilor, Kirsten Hughes, who told me to tell the board that she has been working at getting that whole street plowed, uh, sorry, paved. One of the issues with that road is, it's used for trucks for some reason, and it kind of damaged some water pipes underneath, and, and we, we spoke about making it a one-way, there is a controversy, some neighbors don't want it one-way. But speaking with Kirsten Hughes, she did want me to tell the board, to tell the neighbors that we had, that she was trying to let him get it paved.
And there's one question about a new retaining wall you're putting in? And then, you're gonna add a six-foot fence on top of that?
Not in the back, the six-foot fence is gonna be along the north from the south property, it's mostly woods back here, so this retaining will run parallel with the real.
Did you get a letter, I got a letter? Did you get a letter from the neighbor?
Uh, you know. I, I do have some emails.
I, I will say, the only fence, we only volunteered the fence to use the name of one of the fence.
Right.
We didn't, we're not pushing that fence on there.
Now, here, here's what he said here, on the, uh, the length of the separating wall, you're gonna put a six-foot tall PVC, PVC vinyl fence?
Yes, which is what they asked, yes.
I believe that's all it was, Jim.
Did you, uh, did you get a copy of this here? It just came to me tonight from a neighbor. He said he can't make it here, trying to get a guy that signed that.
I didn't get a copy, that's, this is what we talked about, so I agreed to it.
Okay.
So, the, the, these changes are all what we agreed to.
Okay.
And we also agreed for the trees, the.
For this life, you go in there and we're.
Yes. And you can see, we actually, they're the ones that helped us design the trees, what they wanted there. This is all, we shouldn't have done this before, but it wasn't required, and nobody asked us, knew they were meeting, but when we came here, we realized, we never had one, they required one, and I didn't, I, we felt it was like.
What side of the building was on it?
Uh, it's going to be, uh, potty part. Architectural strength floor.
Any questions?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Thank you, councilor. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor. First call, second call, please step forward, state your name and address to the record,
My name is John Morrissey, eleven sixteen Kidder Street. The other folks who were supposed to be here naturally are all on vacation. We're in favor of having something there.
Right.
It was an eyesore, and I've been there twenty-five years looking at the eyesore. We like the thing, there's the only concern that we do have is the road, and as the gentleman was saying, last year I had a crushed sewer main going into my house. When they built High Point, I had a crushed water main because they used it as a cut-through with all the trucks. It's a piece of garbage.
It is.
And it has been a piece.
Yeah.
And they said, Kirsten says, I guess, that they're not gonna make it a one-way. If you have been on Kidder Street, trying to get up Kidder to get onto Quarry, you're taking your life in your hands. We would like the street paved, and it's a city, but we like the street paved, and it's a one-way going down. Those two, I would like, excuse me.
The city would do that under orders.
Right. But I have been informed since, again, I'm top on the list to get my street done, twenty-five years from now. And I'm still waiting for it. Okay, I got, I got a, people, the gentlemen are no longer working.
They're on top.
But, but on the top, on the top of the list. Is it, is it zoning law, is it a two-family, four-family, or what is the law of the zoning board?
Multiple zones, depending on the size of the property.
Okay.
You can put what the property can handle with the right relief.
All right. So then it's.
If the lot was bigger, you could put six inches.
Absolutely.
Nice.
So it is.
Or you could stuff in, if you didn't make all that green space, if you did a little nice job up there, you know, maybe you could stuff in a small one, try and put, not that weird to prove it, but.
And parking.
A lot of people try to do that.
Parking. It's, excuse me, to fix the park on Kidder Street. And then with more parking, yes, they have garages, but again, you have companies, and you can't park in the garage, you have to park on the street. Wintertime, it's rough, on-street parking, it's even worse because you can't get plows down. And their plowing is lousy there too, so, again, that's.
They don't wanna tear off the street.
Oh, yeah, they don't need to tear off the street, they just lose their muffler system, their oil pan and everything else under the vehicle. We are in favor of it, but it's those that are concerned, the street needs to be done.
Yeah, it does.
And also.
I mean, the council said she's working on it.
Yes, well, again, I'll lap that down to D'Amico. The only one who actually did anything, the only one who actually did anything was Pal Muchi, and they took that section of his water away from him to give it to my illustrious board councillor, who does not seem to wanna be here, who doesn't think it's important. She's more worried about Wallaston and Allovis Square than worrying about West Quincy. So that's a big thing for her, because she won't even answer our phones or anything. She doesn't expect us to do anything. For those that are concerned, the street and the plans are beautiful, I believe it would be a nice add-on, it'll make it look present, you know, nice. But the street and the one, the traffic is a big concern.
Street's bruised, bruised.
It's bruised, have you been on it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a total disaster.
Why don't I have a four-wheel G?
I go down it, I don't go up it. But that's, that's basically it. We, we like it, we like the plans and, and the zone, and yes, the other one was the zoning law, the, um, the zoning fence. Is it twelve feet, or is it eight feet, or what's the screw on it?
What, what are we talking about?
Well, what's the buffer, is the buffer supposed to be twelve feet from the property, from the Justin property? And he wants to put a, a four-foot deck on it, so bring it down to eight feet.
Where is this deck?
If you look at the northern. Yeah, the northern corner, the decks are access to the rear of the property. Mike Joyce from Joyce Consulting Group, civil engineer for the project. So we have a nine, nine-point-seven foot offset from the, if you look at it from the street, from the front, right corner, and it increases as you go back.
Right.
On the southern side, you have a eleven-point-two foot setback, and that's pretty consistent the whole way back.
It's almost ten feet at that corner.
Right. And it increases to twenty-point-seven at the rear of the, on that side.
Are those three-foot deck?
Uh, I think that's four.
Four?
Yeah, the stairs coming down have to be three feet, so they end up about forty-two inches to the outside of the post. I think on the plan to become that part of it.
Just so the board knows, parking is actually ten spots, two for each unit and two residential in that.
The back.
So the decks are actually, the second means it's even, right?
Second call, third call? Is there anyone? Oh, I got a letter here from the DGW to read.
Wait, review the supplemental for the Love Reference Project, and our comments are as follows. Drainify. Submit a stormwater report explaining how the surface runoff to be disposed and treated. The report should include a ten stormwater checklist, the ten stormwater checklists, and a maintenance plan for the proposed drainage structures. Two, submit calculations that show how the proposed infiltration structures have been sized to infiltrate the required discharge, recharge volume, and would drain in twenty, I'm sorry, send in two hours for this last. Is there any soil tests at proposed locations of the drainage structures to determine soil properties and the level of water table? The applicant has not provided test-pit information to establish the estimated seasonal high groundwater elevation for the site, specifically in the area of proposed underground infiltration systems. Four, explain how the runoff from the roof will be disposed. Five, apply for a stormwater connection permit from the Department of Public Works before construction. One, perform water flow tests with the city's water department. Two, cut and cap existing water service at the connection with the mains. Three, use six-inch pipe and gate to tap into the city's main, and install a six-inch gate on the sidewalk before reducing to a four-inch pipe. Sewer, cut and cap, one, cut and cap existing sewer service at the back of sidewalk. Two, all bent structures should be removed or filled with dense grade and stone. Where the new sewer service cannot connect to the main with an angle entry of ninety degrees. Interference block. Proposed, the proposed invert should be channeled inside the city's manhole and match the invert of the existing throughout through the main. The angle of entry should be less than ninety degrees. Four, provide profile of the proposed sewer system, sewer main in Kidder Street. General. One, install, install stone or concrete survey body meant for the lunatic public right-of-way. The mine must be set by professional land surveyor and be installed prior to the acceptance of, of plans. Two, is there any guardrail or fence on proposed retaining wall around the property? Is there any concrete or granite curb around the pavement area? Three, provide dimensions engraved for all driveway entrances. Four, all proposed buildings should have house numbers signed by the engineering division and the DGW before any building permit can be issued. Five, require digital five, apparently auto-cat format for development. Six, the existing condition plan is not signed or stamped by professional land surveyor. Seven, upon completion of the project, as-built plans shall call utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and bench block to find the total site facilities and right-of-ways needing to be submitted lower than digital five. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Further information is required, just, he didn't leave enough here, please advise.
Is there anyone opposed or in the side? First call, second call, third call, call that father here in close. I think they did a round that job up there, and they took a piece of really nasty.
Really nasty.
And it's gonna make it something real nice up there, but I wish and I hope the councilor can get that paved quick, because that is a harvest short there. It should be on the top of the list, which is, I hope everyone's listening to me. I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be voting in favor.
I like the idea of the fence, the plastic fence on the side setback, so I think that that adds a way of buffering the height of it. So, I'm willing to overlook that, and I'll be voting in favor.
I like the whole project compared to what's there, it's, uh, great and improved, I'll be voting in favor.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Chairman. In matter seventeen dash six-zero, Wobley Builders LLC, for variance to construct two new buildings, each containing two townhouses, for a total of four units on the premises number twenty-five Kidder Street, Quincy, I need a break to variance.
Second?
Uh, second.
On motion, CNN, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
Close? Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, for the board, thanks very much.
Case number Z seventeen sixty-one, Allison, the plan, plan them, for special permits, flood type variance to reconstruct the home of one-twenty-nine Rockland Street.
To the board, I'm attorney Jim Heffron in here on behalf of the Disher, Allison of Cleveland. I am coming in more last minute, Jim Burke has been doing a fine job, we'll let him discuss the changes that he submitted last Friday, further conceding some additional changes to the height. I did prepare for the board and request to submit to the record a finding in variance analysis on the hardship, the fact that this is a pre-existing non-conformity use change, being requested of finding that the changes are not substantially more detrimental to
Thank you. And I will leave it to Mr. Burke to discuss the details and the changes.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Jim Burke with the Sel Burke and Associates, here in the office in New Here in Quincy. You know, we've been working on this particular project for a while, a single-family home, five-thousand-square-foot lot, and I apologize, obviously, in here for the last hearing, but I heard it was continued for a foundation and a landscape plan. We prepared those and submitted them, and it's part of the package. The landscape plan right now is showing up on the easel right there, and it's prepared by RBLA, and stamped by a registered landscape architect. Above and beyond, I mean, the revisions on this particular project are several, and part of what the package we put together was the revisions that have been made since the beginning of this particular project. So, and the building height has been reduced, it's now thirty-one and a half feet above average grade, so that meets the zoning requirements. We have changed it from four stories to three stories of the top of that building. You know, we'd raise it up to that level, so, because it's in the flood plain, we're putting a garage under, and revised the foundation as well. I had originally had piles, I, you know, the information I had originally was soils were silty, and, whereas they're gonna support a conventional concrete foundation, we've got Nick Laney of HML come in and do some, you know, testing, some borings, found the soil is more than confident to provide support for a conventional foundation, so we made that revision as well. We put floodway delves on the plans, we need seven, eight-by-sixteen openings to allow the floodwaters to, and flooded underneath the foundation, and, oh, on the building footprint, of course, we changed that to, from thirty-two by twenty-four to thirty-two by twenty-eight. We took off, there was a side deck running along the edge of the, the original plan, and we got rid of that, and we went wider to make up some of this floor space loss because of the request from the owners to, that the building was too high. So, there were several revisions made to this site plan to accommodate the butters, and we're hoping that the, the board agrees, and I can show you the foundation plan as well.
Here, I want to know, on the, on the, you got a concrete foundation you're going to put up, and you're gonna put it up so you have a garage, a flood zone?
Yep.
Now, what are you doing on the side of the cement coming down? How far is the building gonna look like?
Well, right now we have the top foundation at one, at elevation fourteen, finished grade is at nine. So the flood openings are gonna be at elevation nine and a half, they're required to be within six to twelve inches of finished grade. We're not proposing to bring in any additional fill or maintain the grade.
No, you're gonna bring the side of the building down so?
Yes, but so, basically, you're gonna have five.
I want that all covered.
Yeah.
Why are you doing five feet? Why are five feet?
Well, because the, the velocity zone, which is just on the other side of the wall, is elevation thirteen. That's why I picked fourteen. So, I mean, honestly, you can bring it down to ten, I mean, you know, honestly, and then just frame up the rest of it.
It's only a frame, it's gotta be framed down, just bring it down, make it look like a house, not the neighbor looking at a five-foot piece of concrete.
Yeah, but I don't see a problem with that.
It's not fair to them, I don't think. That's what I asked the last time, and I didn't see it on this plan.
Right, right, well, right now you're looking at, you're looking at five foot of exposed concrete, you can certainly revise that.
Yeah, if you saw it, that would be nice. And the property itself, about moving, about, you got fourteen-two on one side, you got seven-eight on the other, right?
Excuse me, I was talking to my client, I said.
You got fourteen-two on one side, and what, seven-eight on the other side?
Yes.
Why can't we move that house like four feet over? Put ten feet on one side, and like eleven foot to the small house on the right.
I guess, from my perspective, and I refer to that to the attorneys on that, we're looking to basically maintain the pre-existing non-conformity and.
I know exactly what you're doing.
Right.
If we can move that house three feet or four feet that way.
If that makes the neighbors happy.
You're gonna do a lot better for her.
Yep.
For the west son, she has a small house. That's, that's what I'm thinking, so, she gets her son too, and he's already got his son.
Right. I mean, the side deck setback on the other butters is at thirteen feet, so.
Oh, I get that.
Yeah.
I get that, but if we can move that house in the middle.
Make it centered?
And it looks a lot better, I think, and it would be better for everybody.
And some of this might be.
You would have called three and a half feet, that's what you're doing.
Yeah. And some of it's gonna be determined by Mass DEP in the Checkers ninety-one license that we have to give them too, so it might affect the process of where the footprint may lie, but.
We wanna get there first and then come back, because that's a little.
Well, that, that could take some time, so, you know.
Ain't gonna build it till you get it anywhere, right?
Correct, but, you know, we, we're happy to come back here for amendment if we have to, if Check ninety-one sends us directions.
All right, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
They already have the, the order condition to the, for the story.
Right. I'm still just trying to move this house three feet and make it, make it better for everyone in that neighborhood, and it'll look a lot better. everyone in that neighborhood, and it'll look a lot better.
Look at, have you moved it in three feet? If that can't happen, we've suggested.
Then they have to come back. That's all. We'll make that as a condition if it does pass, so that could be a condition for the Logan, so we'll move it a hundred feet. Three-six. Three-six. Any questions of the applicant?
I have none.
Do we know?
None, sorry.
Now, everyone here gets a chance to speak again. I'm Zach, not that I, you gotta come up. If you have a different set of plans, we're gonna change this a little bit and let them speak and see how they feel. Yeah, well, is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, closed. No more correspondence. Nothing new. Anyone opposed or on the side? Step forward, speak your name to a record, address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Matthew Lotzke, here as counsel for the abutters. Nice to see you again.
What?
Just on, on one procedural point, there is no final order of conditions issued for this. There was a site inspection that be conducted this past week, and it remains under review. There's also not a check ninety-one license issued that also is just unturned to review. I say, I, I know the council just handed you a memo that's laying out the analysis for the, for the variances. We haven't seen that. The plans have changed significantly, and it's really not fair for, for abutters, members of the public, to be presented with the situation where there's been a, it's a changing moving target. We don't really know what they're asking for and what relief they're seeking at this point.
Do you need two weeks to look at it? I don't mind that.
Two weeks would be a good no.
You guys can sit down, go over it, hash out what you need.
I'd be glad to.
You got a deal. I have a motion to move this to two weeks and then go back. Yes, just, just come back. This, this, because no one's gonna, I felt the same way at the beginning of this, but I knew the property, I knew exactly where you're four feet, so if I move it over three and a half feet, it's a better deal for somebody, so I think I'll be moving this. Let them look at it, so Auguste.
Mr. Chairman, matter seventeen dash six one, Allison McPuddle, three, special permit, flood plain variance to reconstruct a single-family home, the premises number one forty-nine Rockland Street, make a motion to continue the hearing until August eighth.
Second. On motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Come on. They'll be held, held in two weeks, so the abutters get a chance to see the new plans we just got tonight. Uh, further on the, no, we're in the new business, case number Z seventeen seventy. Five J convenience store for planning a change of use from a hair salon to a convenience store, and premise number six eighteen six twenty-two Hancock Street.
Mr. Chairman, honorable members, for record, my name is attorney Jack T. Milrow. The applicant, five J convenience store, A, five J convenience store, Angus and Massachusetts Corporation, the usual place of business at sixty-two Hancock Street here in Quincy. Request is even for a finding for a change of use from a nail salon to a convenience store. This property is a mixed-use property, has seven units, has five residential units upstairs, two commercial units downstairs. My client's proposal is to sell lottery products, tobacco products, cereartals, food and beverages at this location. There's an actual number of employees that'll be working at any one time, will be two. The proposed hours would be no earlier than six AM, no later than nine PM. This would be an independent store, would not be part of a chain or a franchise. The building is pre-existing non-conforming as a parking, it has no parking. However, there are fourteen legal on-street parking spots in between Blake Street and Willett Street, which are the intersecting side streets, and those legal on-street spots serve as the four commercial storefronts in between those intersecting streets, which would be dependable, which has been there for as long as I can recall. The dental office has been there as long as I can recall. The store that we're looking to put in, and the plumbing office where I never see anybody there. In addition, on the Willett Street side of the building, there's five additional legal on-street spots, over the total of nineteen legal on-street spots, usually within the vicinity of the building. I've had the opportunity to discuss this proposal with Mr. Duca, who told me that he had no objection, his line, Counselor Hughes had no objection in the board issued finding. I've also had the opportunity to speak to Counselor Hughes, told me the same thing, that she had no objection at all, and Mr. Duca had no objection in the board issued finding. I'd ask, I'd ask you if you look favorably.
What are we here for?
I ask, Mr. Duca asked me to come here, so I'm here. I'd ask, I'd ask you if you look favorably.
I just got one question. What's with the common laundry room you still have?
Um, that was, well, it's not common to us. I mean, as I said, there's five units upstairs.
Right. Is this, is this the line you use, V's?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with store.
But it's in, like, the store.
It's in, it's on the first floor.
Yeah.
That's correct. I'm not that familiar with it, because there's not anything that we're interested in, but it services the units upstairs.
All right. Do you have any other questions? Anyone have any questions?
Did I, did I see an article that said that this property would be redeveloped, that was recently sold? The whole property, not just the first floor?
I don't represent the owner of the building, I just represent the tenant. I have no knowledge of the tenant.
Oh, okay, all right, I just didn't, I, I thought I saw something about five or six months ago.
Yeah, but the building was soaked during the winter, that's correct.
Yeah. But there's not a, you're not aware of a current?
No, I'm not aware of that, but I said, I don't represent the owner of the building, I just represent the prospective tenant.
Okay, thank you.
We've been off for a long, we, we actually have a five-year lease, so if we do any redevelopment, it's not gonna be where we are, so.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Can you enter the laundry area from the store area, it looks like, there's a door?
There's a door, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct. If you walk into the storefront, if you walk to the back, there's a door, but you can turn to right, and that's where the laundry is, that's correct.
You get to work and do your laundry at the same time.
I could use that.
Side drive.
Anything else, Phil?
No, no.
No questions? Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Anyone wanna speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, closed. The letterhead, July sixth, sixteen, six eighteen, six twenty-two Hancock Street, case number Z seventeen seventy, you have no comment. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, closed.
I'm in favor.
Yep. I need to make a store.
I need to.
Comments?
I'm in favor.
Comments? On the motion pool?
Number Z seventeen seventy-one. No, seventy. Five J convenience store for applying a change of use from a hair salon to a convenience store, and the premise number six eighteen dash six twenty-two Hancock Street, make motion, has the finding.
Second.
Approve the finding.
Right.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Come on.
Joe, nice to see you, thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. Further on tonight's business, case number Z seventeen seventy-one, Douglas Men's, TLL for variance finding, to subdivide the lots to construct a single-family home on the new creative lot, premise number forty-five Batcock Street. The applicant they're representing here, counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming up here on behalf of the Men's family, joined by members of the Men's family and also Steve DeRoche, who is the surveyor, here to survey the site plan that you're reviewing tonight. As you indicate, Mr. Chairman, this is a matter involving forty-five Batcock Street, which is a residence A zoning district in the House Neck. The Men's family and the siblings are the owners of the property. They've inherited the property actually from their parents and their family, who lived there for seventy-seven years. They've owned the property since nineteen forty, so they're a longtime House Neck family. Doug and his siblings, as I indicated, inherited the property and are moving forward with the prospect of selling the property, but before doing so, decided I wanted to pursue the opportunity to re-subdivide the site that their father did back in nineteen sixty-eight. The property that we're dealing with right now is about a ten thousand square foot parcel land. It was known back in nineteen sixty-eight as parcels, lot one twenty-one and one twenty-two. And in nineteen sixty-eight, Mr. Men's senior, their father, actually, after having acquired lot one twenty-one, in which the house was located, built, acquired lot one twenty-two, the parcel next door. He held on to that, that site for a number of years, and in nineteen sixty-eight, he realized that by holding it in common ownership, it merged by operation of law. So he lost the ability to develop that site, which he had always planned to do. So in nineteen sixty-eight, he filed an application with this board, seeking to subdivide the parcel, which was ten thousand square, square feet at the time, into two five thousand square foot parcels, again, lot one twenty-one and one twenty-two. And he was successful in doing so, and in nineteen sixty-eight, the board granted him the relief that he needed to do so. He never moved forward with the, with the build, the plan to build on that parcel over, and he continued to live in the property. And then, again, lost his right to do so after one year expired. This application essentially seeks to reaffirm and redo what his, what their parents did in nineteen sixty-eight, and subdivide the existing ten thousand square foot parcel. And it's really ideally situated, because the home, as I told you, was really built on one twenty-one alone, so it's located to the part of the site, and leaving the remaining land available for that secondary lot. The plan that was then designed by, by the front of Valley surveys, Steve DeRoche, basically reaffirmed and redesigned the same exact subdivision that was done in sixty-eight. And the goal is, and the plan is, to subdivide this into two five thousand square foot parcels, construct a new, single-family home, two and a half stories in, in height, which was designed and professionally designed by an architect, also a House Neck gentleman himself, with garage parking for the home, and then two levels of living above. For the first, four walk-in six, consists of standard living area, living room, dining room, kitchen, mudroom, half bathroom, and a second level of living for the three bedrooms and keybacks and a laundry room. The request that's requested, the relief that's requested tonight, is relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit to allow for the subdivision of the parcel. Although we didn't have a neighborhood meeting, we did reach out to the city councilor, Margaret Forrest, and Margaret sent out a letter to the entire community. She indicated to me tonight, she had a conflict that she couldn't be here, but indicated to me tonight that there was no opposition at all that she received from the neighborhood. And Doug Men's also, at my request, went out and spoke to all the neighbors in the community, and certainly in that, in that vicinity, and to share the plans with them, to let them know what, what the family was planning to do, and he did so, and didn't receive a lot of opposition. He did also speak with the neighbors, the abutting neighbors, Joyce and Glenn Brabel, and they, and the Brabels expressed some request that, as part of this plan, that there be a privacy, stockade, privacy fence be put up along the property line, and the Men's have agreed to do so, and incorporate that into your conditions if this is met or is approved. It's a great proposal, it's really just redoing really what their, their parents' dream was, and what's interesting about it, and I think even better about this, is that already today, the families received a lot of interest from other House Neck families, whose children are in a position and ready to, to, to buy and move, either move back to the neck or stay in the neck and wanna, wanna build or live in a home. And this gives those families a great opportunity to do so. And I know the Men's being such a long-time House Neck people themselves, are gonna probably give first priority to folks that, that have lived in that area, and, and chances are, this, both of these homes will be occupied for, by another family, or two families in the years to come. So we're, we're hopeful that the board also sees this as a reasonable proposal. It's certainly in light of the history that's been presented.
Counsel, is that, is that building fifty feet tall?
Fifty feet tall?
That's what I read in it.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
It's like forty-seven terrain, forty-seven nine, forty-seven seven.
Forty-seven three.
Forty-seven three plus. That's at the ridge line, so it's probably like, close to fifty feet. Making two, two non-conforming lots out of the one lot now, right?
I don't recall that the house was that high. Is that how, is that how it's shown in the design?
Yeah, you're getting a question, fifty feet tall. You hear that with the noise?
I think it drops, I think the, the site drops off in the back, and I think that's why, because the topography changes so dramatically towards the back of the site.
Oh, true.
It appears, it appears that height from the rear, but it's certainly not that height from the, from the front of the home, that I understand. The architect is not.
It was in the front, too.
It was in the front, all you're showing.
It was in on both ends, front and back.
Forty-seven three, at the ridge.
It shows the ridge line, but it, but as you see in the, on the plan, it shows the ridge line and measures from the back of, back of the home.
Worst case, worst case, worst case you're talking, three feet, three feet of difference, so forty, four feet, forty-five.
So, yeah, I, I think the reference point, this whole building starts at eight foot six, eight feet, six inches.
Right.
On the front.
No.
Then it goes down, right?
That's sort of what they use for a base line.
Right, and then it.
Right. So in other words, the forty-seven, you have to probably rise to eight foot, so forty. See, it starts on, instead of starting at zero.
Yeah, it starts at eight, ten, maybe. Eight-six on the, on the back. No, eight-six in the garage, right?
Yeah, but it starts over at eight foot six.
On the garage, yeah, right.
Instead of zero.
Right, so you're at forty feet, so, and that's the ridge with another two feet, maybe, so it's forty-nine, I said forty-one foot tall.
That's from the rear of the house where the parkage drops off, but they, but, but as we know in Quincy, it's, the height of the building is measured from average grade. This doesn't establish an average grade. I'm not sure if the, if you're still in a gray. So we, that, certainly we understand that this has to meet, we, we didn't see no request to relieve for, for height for this proposal, that this, this is intended to be a two and a half story height, which means that it needs to meet the, the maximum height of thirty-six feet. The plan needs to be redesigned when, when built to, to, to satisfy the ordinance in that respect, and will do so. The, the Men's architects build this.
What's, what's the roof line? What do they have for a roof?
Well, I think this is a, I think the goal was certainly to keep this as a smaller footprint, because you see the front of the house is narrow.
Forty-five is too long, it's not a small.
Narrow, narrow footprint, narrow.
It's forty-eight foot.
To provide.
For the fifty-foot house, on a five thousand square foot lot.
That's a.
You know, you think a house, you wanna subdivide, you build a house, you come up with a twenty-four by thirty-six home, not a forty-eight foot home, which is, to me, huge for that lot.
Because it was.
Especially with the lines around.
Well, I would say, Mr. Chairman, certainly I understand your concern, and, but the, but the goal will be that the design of the home comply with the requirement of the ordinance, which means that it's no greater than thirty-six feet in total height. It will be no greater than three bedrooms, as we're, we've provided for in the, in the plan.
Which is personally, if I put home there, it's much for that lot. It's just me, I'm one. It's just that home, I recommend a nice house and a House Neck five, five thousand square foot lot, they recommend twenty-four by thirty-six, or twenty-eight by thirty-two or something, could, you could, yeah, forty-eight foot house.
We would certainly.
Pretty big house for a small, small little lot.
Understood, and we'd certainly be willing to accept conditions as such, if the board felt as though the, the, you know, approval of, of the subdivision was warranted here, and you wanted to limit the size of the home by, by limiting the, the overall depth of the foundation, and certainly limiting the height to the thirty-six feet, we could certainly be agreeable to that. The goal of the Men's is not to build some monstrosity on the site, and to be honest with you, I think, quite frankly, they'd be relying on the professionals in their architect to design a home and have work.
They've been offered for the land and the house already, but they wanted some divide, to get the most out of it. I get that, I get, I get that, I really get that.
And also do what their father planned to do since nineteen sixty-eight.
A forty-eight foot house, to me, you subdivide, you get your subdivision, and I put this massive house, really, that's a long, long home, that's a big home for that little lot. And then only fifty feet, hundred feet, so we've got a hundred feet, you've got, he's going down the mosh in the back, just, that's just, I'm one, you can ask me anything you want, I can answer, I can vice cheer your neck.
All right, thank you.
Counsel?
Council, I, I don't understand why the architect couldn't be here today, I'm sure they have some reason, I'm not saying that, but it would be good so us, so we get some clarification on the real size of this place, I don't expect you to really-
Looking at the plan as well, on the front, if you look at the site plan, you can see comparably how, how it, how it matches up with the existing home. And the existing home is, is quite similar in size when it comes to the depth of the home. It's closer to the front lot, however, and I don't know the answer, I'm sorry, Mr. Chavez, I don't know the answer about the availability.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think, quite frankly, I think we didn't anticipate those kinds of questions on this. But, but looking at that plan in the front, it seems very comparable to the home next door. But clearly, if, if the concern of the board is that this is just too long, a home, we could certainly are willing to accept conditions that would modify the size of the home. I don't think the Men's were, had any intention of building some monstrosity on this home that didn't work. They have a twenty, cause they have, in the rear, in fact, they have a twenty-eight, if I looked at it, either twenty-six point five setback from the rear of the site, so it's still significantly setback from the rear of the problem.
But, so I, I'm just concerned that if we, if this board says, oh, no, it has to be fifty-seven, eighty feet long, that that's not a doable thing, it would be a best decision to be applied if that's what the architect would be answering as far as. That's, that's what I'm thinking right now, thank you.
Concur, I, I think you're above eight to ten feet for either.
Too high, yeah. And then the front, he's gonna bring it up.
Yeah, okay. Yes, but he's eight feet below grade to get one.
I see, I see. Eight feet go up to it, yeah, so he still might have to, I don't know, I don't know what it is now, I'd have to look it up, but I did-
The driveways and under.
I didn't even realize the house was that big.
Right.
I thought there was some divide and put the small house there.
I think it was, I think the goal was to actually, to provide a home that complied with the ordinance, so that it matched the height requirements, it matched the setback requirements, and, and I believe that it was, it was intended to be designed in that fashion, because we weren't seeking any relief outside of that for the home. We were only seeking minimum lot area per dwelling unit. So the goal was to simply build a home that fit on the site, that provided for appropriate setbacks, which it does, thirteen feet on both sides, twenty-five feet in the front, and twen- and actually twenty-six point five in, in the rear. If this board feels as though it's just still too large, we can certainly seek to modify the plans or this or a re-pick modification that the board may want to put in as conditions. But I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chavez, I'm just, in order that this matter can move along.
Yeah, I understand. I'm done.
I just don't recall going out there, seeing the house next door being almost forty-eight feet tall, that it certainly stand out.
No, it's not, it's not built like that then, it's an old home, it's been, it's been there a hundred years, so that's the way, you know, it's just a regular house.
I'm just talking about the, the footprint that's shown on the plan, the footprint, as you look at the two footprints for the, for the existing house and this house, the footprints are similar in size. Certainly the height was not, it's not as high as, as this house, because this house has to be built in floodplain compliance, where they uproot the old home denying. Thank you.
Parking, you just have the spot in front of the driveway, is that it?
We have driveway parking, right, so we have, we have driveway parking that provides for-
I mean, in front of the garage, so it's just the garage and not a single spot?
That's right. Although the driveways, I believe, I'm not sure how long the driveway is.
Fourteen feet.
Oh, what is this?
Where is it?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, being large, twenty-five.
You done?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, I know how you guys feel, I know. It's one thing being there seventy-one years, staying and living in the home. You subdivide it, you put a house there to sell and to walk away. So, I'm gonna put a fifty-foot house, I just don't think someone doing that down there should do that. I think that house should be somewhere about thirty-six foot long. It was thirty-eight max, now forty.
Sorry, what is it?
Twenty-six or twenty-eight by, by, by thirty-six is a big house. Well, forty-eight, that's a very big house, that's a, that's a long, long, big house. I think it's just too much for the lot, it's, you, you give them a subdivision in the lot, I put a fifty-foot home, five thousand, so you're making two non-conforming lots now. It's nice to have a nice lot, once in a while, see a nice lot of land, so, that's just me, but.
Is there any testimony yet, everything?
No, we didn't do nothing yet, but do you want to talk to them about changing the house before we go there? And come back in two weeks with a different set of plans?
Yeah, okay.
And an architect and, and, and talk about that, it's up to you guys. I'm one vote, it's five votes.
You're talking about the length of the-
Length of the house.
We have a question about the height.
I think the height is trouble to me.
But you gotta build a compliance with floodplain, so I get it, that, it might be at eighteen, it might have like nine, fourteen. Sixteen, so you get nine, eighteen.
From the-
Yeah, I mean, it, no, I don't know what the roof is, I don't know if there's a, it's got a, I don't know. Seven twelve, I don't know what's on its roof line, I don't know what that is, I didn't even look at it.
Well, they're building it slowly, it's probably over forty feet.
Well, yeah, but you get, right, it's a big, long guy roof line. It may be.
So, Mr. DeRoche actually looked at the plan and, and determined average grade, based on average grade, the height is thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
It certainly looks taller from the rear, because the site drops off.
Right.
But it is in floodplain compliance, but it's also in compliance with zoning, the height at thirty-five feet.
Cause what's so scary is it's forty-seven on the plan, right?
And I think there's some confusion because of that, it starts at eight, it starts at eight.
Forty-eight, and forty-seven's still thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Average it out thirty-five, it's a good down mark. Five, sixteen, sixteen, four twenty down. I'm just saying. It's up to you guys.
This is going back to the, this is going back to the original site, the lot site. It was a five thousand foot lot when we bought it.
That's right.
They're taking a ten thousand foot lot, how much?
But I mean, with the subdivision plan, what I think it bought was five thousand.
Which is a lot, a lot of lots of down there, like, that doesn't make it right for the way another fifty-foot house and subdivides. The neighbor across the street, she's got a beautiful lot, they're ten thousand square feet, but I think her house is a little over two floors. Should be here next week. And that's what happened, just keep stuffing, stuffing, stuffing in homes, and then what do we end up? We didn't get out of House Neck. Comments, ahead of us?
Yeah, no, just, Steve DeRoche, not so going through that, I just wanna say, all we're doing right now is reiterating what the zone board of deals did fifty years ago.
Well, and, and things change in fifty years, right?
Change totally different.
No, I mean, you can build anything down there, nine cent and a cottage is turned over, so. And that's what happened, garage, how many garages down there are homes today? Two, two homes on one lot. A lot of them, Dowell Street, Bell Street. And it happened, people just did, so, anyway, let's move on.